All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to start off with asking Mr. Akari to lead us in the full allegiance.
I'm not in allegiance to the law.
Are there any questions or comments for the minutes from September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four? There are no questions, may I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four?
Second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Smasenow?
Yeah.
Mr. Akari?
Yes.
Mr. Quillen?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Chairman Turquion?
Yes.
And next, I'd like to open up the public hearing scheduled for seven P M. October twenty-fourth. The applicants Paul and Susan are applying for an area variance to enable their submission of a building permit for an addition to their single-family residence. The subject parcel is eight Rip Van Lane, which is located in the R-one zone. The applicants are proposing the construction of a fourteen-hundred-foot addition at the rear of their existing home. The proposed location requires a side setback variance of ten foot from twenty to ten feet. Also, add a letter from the neighbors on the relief side was submitted in approval of their proposal. And at our September twenty-six meeting, the project was classified as a type-two action under SECR. Would the applicant or applicants? Uh, please come up and explain a little bit to the board again on why you are seeking relief and what relief you're seeking.
Good evening, I'm Paul Silver. Um, good to see you all again. The, uh, the issue we have is, um, we've been in the house since the, uh, early eighties. We moved into this area and had the house built. Uh, we added on a sunroom on the back of the house, a four-season sunroom. From a contractor who, um, I don't want disparage people, but he's, he's out of business now, and this is one of the reasons. So we have to take down the sunroom as it is failing. So, given that, we're gonna add in, uh, we're, we're planning to add in a bedroom and bathroom for my father-in-law, who's currently in New Hampshire, to have him come out and move with us. And then adding on a larger, uh, sewing area studio for my wife, that's her main hobby for her retirement. So we did all this on the back of the house, so the front of the house, the neighborhood and everything won't change. The existing sunroom itself is different than the drawings that were submitted to the town. I think I brought this up the last time. The gentleman, besides having issues with the construction, also had issues with uh, the permitting and doing it correctly. So this will also correct that error and bring it to the correct plot line. Uh, we hired an engineering firm this time, Nolan Engineering, to make sure that everything was done properly and to the letter. And they've been very, very helpful in making sure that everything, uh, comes out. So we're asking for that area variance to get us to that corner area. It's basically replacing where the sunroom is and moving out two feet uh, further towards the property line and then four feet further back and then going straight across. We actually had the contractor come by today for a first look at the property and reviewing the, uh, final plans that we had drawn up. Thought it would go very well and fit in with the neighborhood, so that was good. A lot of people have done additions around us, not this large, but, uh, the neighbor on the, the one who wrote the letter and then two across the street have all done additions on their property. So it should fit in nicely with the neighborhood. That's what, that's basically where we stand right now.
And, um, the, the reason it was going there, you had, um, obviously in the front, more relief and then on the other side?
On the other side is the septic system on the other side of the house. The proposed drawings when, uh, Mr. Ferrone built the property had the septic system in the rear. First time we went to pump it, the guy goes, "No, it's over here." So, uh, the, uh, it's on the side of the house and the leach field runs down that side also. So we'll have to add a larger tank. We talked to the, also Nolan Engineering did a design plan for the septic. They recommended, uh, two ways to go was either, uh, put in an additional, um, damn what it's called, it's not a distribution, it's not the distribution box, it's an additional box.
Septic tank.
Yeah, ex- expanding the existing tank. Or to replace the existing tank with a larger one and then, uh, direct the leach field down around the back. And that's, that's the option that they decided to go with, because you said, uh, with a forty-year-old tank, it's better to get it, just remove it and put in a new system. If we have the variance on that side is not approved, then we have to move the entire septic further over and then that increases the size and scope of the property, I mean, the the addition and also the expense involved also. Uh, we'd have to take down a bunch more trees to come in from the right side further in that way. And that, and plus the additional excavation. So we're at, so it, it would be, uh, to our benefit to be able to do it on that side rather than uh, kitty corner of the building kind of and have it go the other way for the same square footage.
Sure, okay. Perfect. Um, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a seat now. Uh, would anyone, uh, from the public like to make a comment? Anyone on Zoom?
Nope.
May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Show them.
Make that.
I'll check.
Mr. Smasenow?
Yes.
Mr. Akari?
Yes.
Mr. Quillen?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Chairman Turquion?
Yes. Does the board have any other questions or comments?
If I could make a quick suggestion just before the board takes any final action, I can read the factors for consideration. So, in consideration of area variances, the board shall take into account the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the community by such grant. And the Board of Appeals in granting area variances shall grant the minimum variance it deems necessary and adequate and at the same time to preserve and protect the character of the community and neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community.
Thank you. With that, any, any other questions or comments? Okay, if there are no additional questions or comments, I'd like to have a motion to approve the area variance as stated on the application for eight Rip Van Lane.
Just ten foot of relief, is that correct? I'll make the motion.
I'll sec- I'll second the motion.
Mr. Smasenow?
Yes.
Mr. Akari?
Yes.
Mr. Quillen?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
And Chairman Turquion?
Yes. All right, next on the agenda is thirteen ninety-four Armor Road. Um, the applicants are applying for an area variance to rectify a building encroachment on their parcel. Um, the twenty-four-hundred-square-foot barn is located forty-four feet from the side, uh, yard property line. Uh, necessitating a request for six feet of relief from the fifty-foot side yard setback required uh, in the R-two zone. Uh, additionally, the applicant is seeking an area variance uh, for the minimum lot frontage, which is establishes, or which establishes a fifty-foot lot width throughout the depth of the parcel. Uh, the previous application include a lot line adjustment, which is no longer being pursued at this time. Uh, and the applicant is aware, um, that if they are to request a lot line adjustment, um, they would have to seek a variance separate from this. Okay, um, so can, um, I'm assuming Peter, you're coming up, if you could come up and, um, give us an overview of the nature of the, the variance, why you're seeking it, what hardships you're experiencing, um, and then what, you know, what relief?
Thank you, thank you for seeing us tonight again. Um, like we said last month, the reason we're going for this is that the barn was placed on the property and we found out in the process of working, uh, uh, with my relative on a boundary line agreement that the, um, barn was not meeting the requirements, uh, required by the town. It did not have the required setback. So I came in and, uh, we talked to Mr. Lewis and he said you'd have to go for a variance to get that rectified before anything else is done. So that's step number one is we try to rectify the placement of the barn and the six-foot, um, error in the placement of the barn. The second thing that we're asking for is our, we're trying to keep the continued continuity of our property from here through here to this, the majority of my land that goes fields.
Can you use the microphone? Bring it with you.
It goes to fields and forest, um, out in the back. And this is the only access point that I have, it's right through here, all right? Um, so we're looking for the sixteen-foot for the offset, uh, uh, for one eighty-twenty for the future lot line. But again, we are not discussing the boundary line agreement at this time. That is something that we've come back for in the future. We'll be able to be able to get, um, you know, to get through the forest land, I have about roughly twenty-plus acres back there of timber and that, uh, if you're harvesting it in any way, shape, or form with trucks, loaders, whatever, they have to get through there with the equipment. And right now, I am, uh, have a lease with Dave Wood of Charlton, who does my fields. And he brings his hay equipment in, which is commercial hay equipment, not the regular small farm hay equipment. And he can knock out my farm in about three hours, all the fields. So it's big, it's big stuff. So I have to make sure that he has a way of getting in and out of those fields. And again, as for our future, um, you know, right now, my son has the land to my north and we're able to pass through that. But I, my wife and I are looking on, we're seventy-four and seventy-five. We're looking beyond us, you know, what happens to the future? And, uh, just trying to make it so it's easy and the right-of-way or the causeway to get from one piece of land to the other, uh, stays with the property, not with us. And that's our request.
So just to, um, make sure everyone's aware, they're looking for six-foot of relief right now, as it stands, the barn is at forty-four feet from the property line.
Correct.
So they would need six feet to justify that or rectify that. And then they're also, um, looking for a minimum, um, width, lot width adjustment, um, which would be, I think thirty-three-point-four feet from the border to ten feet from the barn.
Correct.
Uh, which is sixteen-point-six feet of relief in anticipation of a lot line adjustment. Now, that's separate then, if that does happen, then that barn would need another variance.
Correct.
Any questions?
Yeah, I've got, I, I've got, you know, I heard you talk about the hay equipment, uh, last time?
Yes.
And, uh, I'm not su- I'm not an expert on hay equipment, but I've never seen anything more than, you know, if it's anything bigger than twenty feet, I mean, you couldn't go down the road with it.
No, but again, you're, you're going in and out with trucks and hay equipment, I mean.
Trucks, twelve, you know, ten feet's a truck. I, I, I guess what I'm saying is, you, you talk to me about logging equipment, you know, I used to work sites. You don't need fifty feet. So I'm trying to understand why that's, I mean, I, if, if that's your reason, I don't see it, I guess I'm being honest.
The thing is, they wouldn't have fifty feet, I look, I can, if, if they go with a lot line agree, a lot line, boundary line adjustment in the future, I only have thirty-three foot six.
Right, but. I'm, 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 you know, I can only deal with what's in front of me now.
Correct.
Okay, and so I'm, you know, the reason you're giving me doesn't seem to you know, it's almost like maybe you gotta do that later. I'm just, I'm trying to keep it so that I.
Well, I'll be honest with you, sir, the, when you have a point.
I hope you will.
I am. When you're out there and, uh, I invited you all to come out and see it, the point and the stone wall where the, where the boundary is, the stone wall that is an existing stone wall for Daniel, Zach, and myself right now is not a straight line like this, it's this big. Okay, so that takes up room, you have trees in the right-of-way along that tree line. So unless I ask the neighbor or someone else asks the neighbor, take the trees down with the stone wall or sheared off perfectly perfect, you haven't got the full width that you're thinking of fifty feet. Okay, you're cutting it back, if I, if I'm at another thirty-four feet and then you have the stall coming in this way, you've narrowed it down at least by another eight feet. And you can come look at it, that's why I had.
You know, like I said, I, I, I'm just, I might be.
And again, it, it's, I understand you're correct as far as the.
I kinda wanna separate it, I don't know if we can do that. You know, having a, you know, the barn got built, I don't know why it got built that way, it's, I don't care. You know, you're asking for relief.
Correct.
That seems like a logical thing to me. But the, the, you know, I just feel like I don't have enough information on the second part. And I guess that's what I'm saying, I just don't. For ingress egress for, for equipment, I don't see it. And I'm trying to, um, help me understand.
Well, again, uh, put yourself in my shoes. Okay, right now, the land is mine, okay? And if I own the land, I'm gonna give myself the maximum amount of room, not the minimum amount of room. So I am not going to control myself down to a narrow passageway to get equipment through when especially on a gravel or rubble road, okay? When it, you know what it does, you said you've been involved with it. It's not like being on a paved road.
I understand that.
So I think that thirty-four feet is adequate. But I, uh, I don't think I'd go any less, I think I never would go any less. It's either, you know, you, you, you're putting me in a position where I need to give that thirty-four feet to keep my continuity of my property forward to be for now and for the future if I want to sell it. Okay, and, uh, I don't think I would go any further. Any less than that.
So maybe for my benefit, and sorry if I'm not getting it, that the thirty-three-point-four, that the relief sought there is for just as it says, future access, right?
That is correct.
And the board's point is correct where we can't, we can't think about what, an application that might be granted or might be submitted in the future, because if the variance is granted at this time, then it's there, running with the land, no matter if an application is submitted at some certain date or not. Just wanted to bring that point up for everyone.
We're gonna ask a question. Can the board give me a conditional approval so that this ten feet is my baseline for my future discussion with my border line agreement?
Well, this.
Because, yeah, I had to start somewhere.
Right.
And I spent a year getting to this point. Not with you, but with my relatives.
Normally, I'll answer your question, but normally the application for this sort of relief would come in tandem with a lot line adjustment application, because there's supposed to be discussion between the two granting boards. When lot lines change and a variance is involved, the planning board can, the zoning board can request an opinion from the planning board? Because the boards are both looking at those applications?
I wasn't aware that we were getting involved with the planning board because the boundary line agreements were.
Council, uh, boundary line agreements are done in the, uh, building department office.
I must have been looking at the old code, sorry.
Yeah, they're not, uh, lot line adjustments can be done, uh, as a code enforcement office, it's a decision, a lot line, lot line adjustments done in our office if, uh, the area in bulk is met for the project.
Thank you for pointing that out before I went too far on.
Some, most, most municipalities treat a lot line with a planning board action. Um, there's a certain few in the county that still use the enforcement officers, officers as, uh, they're able to do a lot line adjustment, seeing it as a, a minor action and it, uh, is oversaw by the, uh, um, the county after it's approved by the town.
So I'll withdraw that comment.
I'm just, you know, so basically, I'm just trying to get to the essence, I, I don't wanna waste your time, okay?
No, 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 I, I'm fine.
Yeah, because I'm, I was looking at all this and I'm, and I know that there's lots of mitigating stuff that's none of my business at all.
There was a lot of, I feel, unnecessary and embarrassing.
Yeah, it's none of my business, I really don't wanna know.
That should debate, that was very unprofessional by the relatives and their attorney, uh, because those were private conversations that could be put onto the public website. And I apologize to the board for that, because it should never have happened. Um, but it is what it is, it happened. And in my case, I actually do it best for my wife and myself. And our property that we've all broke for over forty-five years.
Yep.
And just, just to, obviously, that's separate, we're, we're looking at a specific thing and I understand there's, you know, obviously more to it. Um, I think the, the barn, uh, relief setback for, uh, rectifying it, um, I think the board understands. I think where the confusion is, we're looking for, well, you're looking for the minimum lot width to be adjusted and the reason would be why. Obviously, you're gonna propose a lot line adjustment. I guess the, the question is, what is that lot line adjustment? Obviously, um, we can handle it with our enforcement officer. I don't know if it's, are you more comfortable seeing the lot line adjustment proposal with variance?
I get, basically, you know, I, I, I listen, you know, you, you gave me some stuff out of equipment, because that's what I was focused on. That's what you said. And I'm, and I'm sitting there and I'm like, this doesn't make any sense to me. So then I thought, well, maybe there's something else. So now what you're telling me, I just wanna make sure I understand. You're saying that, let me finish, just, just so you can tell me if I'm.
Ask me to come out and see it, you know, it would be worth having to decide.
I understand that, but what, what I'm saying is, is, you know, I like to make decisions based on the facts that come to me, okay? I think what you're telling me, and, and tell me if I'm wrong, because I could be a hundred percent wrong. What you're telling me is, hey, someday, I'm gonna pass this on to my kids and I want them to be able to sell it or do whatever they want with it, at least that'll be one option. Is that?
Uh, no.
Then help me.
I mean, that, well, the safety committee, they'll pass it on to my children, that's not happening.
Well, or wherever it goes.
I wanted to make clear, I wanted to just say that, so don't get trapped here.
Yeah, he's trying to protect the integrity of the parcel.
Integrity of our property, all right? And, and in order to do that, I believe that thirty-four feet, thirty-three foot, whatever it is, uh, is adequate for getting equipment or anything else to do with it. Whether it be equipment, cattle, horses, sheep, I don't care what the people want to do better. Because our fields, um, Mr. Lewis and Patrick were out there and saw it. They saw the fields that I had that are under contract behind this barn, uh, to the, and to the south of the barn, and also to the north of the barn. All right, so there's, there is use of the property. There's a forest back there. So I'm not going to, uh, try to hone in on the future of the property, um, whether it's, you know, thirty-four feet or, or forty feet or thirty feet or twenty-five feet. If you own the property, you would take the maximum. It'd still be.
Well, you're, not me, but that's separate.
Well, the, the maximum distance would be, you know, what the board would grant anyway, because that's the minimum relief.
What I was asking was thirty-four feet.
Yep.
And because that was the ten-foot as a buffer around the barn, on, on the door side of that barn, or any maintenance that would be there, there is no, uh, enter or no exit, external doors on that side of the barn. All right, so the future, it doesn't have to do with any egress in or out of that barn, other than maintenance. But the ten-foot is more than enough maintenance for somebody to maintain that. And we're out in the country, we're not, we're not in a development, we're out in the fields. And Mr. Lewis and Patrick have seen that.
You know, I, when I heard that the application changed, the only reason I didn't come out that time, I got your number right.
Yep.
Okay.
Can you make a motion?
Any questions on anything?
We gotta set a public hearing.
Yes, I, so, um, does, does the board understand the variance? I know it's, it's kinda complicated, there's two relief sought. One is the anticipation of a lot line adjustment. Just wanna make sure everyone understands.
And, Mr. Chairman, the, the applicant, in order to do a lot line adjustment, he will have to come back before the board for a, another variance as well.
Yes.
Fully aware of it.
Yep. So there'd be another one required for the, if the proposed lot line adjustment is what was on the application, ten-feet buffer from the barn, that would need relief as well. No questions on it? I, I I do wanna just point out, obviously, that's a separate thing, there's nothing saying if we're, we approve this one, there's a requirement to approve the other one, just we're talking about just this relief right now. Yep. The six-foot for the barn and then sixteen-point-six for the minimum lot width requirement for the proposed lot line adjustment. Those are it.
The sixteen would bring it to thirty-four?
Yes, sixteen, it's sixteen-point-six would bring it to thirty-three-point-four feet.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Cause you originally.
I'm with you now, you, you, what I was thinking is the thirty-four, sixteen, fifty.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, two, two separate.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Yep. So the, the six-foot relief brings the barn from the fifty-foot requirement to forty-four.
Four, yep.
And then the minimum lot width adjustment brings it from fifty to thirty-three-point-four.
Yep.
Okay.
And there's two separate issues.
Yes.
One, you understand?
Okay. That was a, that's a good one, all right. Um, does the board feel the application is complete?
Stage and point, yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, so this is a, uh, type-two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act with a nega- negative declaration of significance. Uh, may I have a motion to schedule the public hearing for this application for next month, November twenty-first at two thousand twenty-four, uh, at seven P M.
Make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Smasenow?
Yes.
Mr. Akari?
Yes.
Mr. Quillen?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Chairman Turquion?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is, um, twelve All right. The next item on the agenda is, um, twelve Vichy Drive. Did I say that right? All right.
Like Vichy water.
Somewhat new to the area. I'm getting there.
So if you drank Vichy.
Uh, so the applicants are applying for, uh, two area variances to enable their submission of a building permit for two additions to their single family residence. The subject parcel is twelve Vichy Drive, which is in the R one zone. The applicants are proposing the construction of two minor additions to the front and side of their existing home. The proposed, uh, location requires a front yard variance of five feet um, from forty, or from fifty to forty-five and side setback variance of three feet from twenty to seventeen feet. Can the applicant or representative give us, uh, um, an overview of, um, the nature of the area variance? Why you're seeking it, what hardships you're speaking or, uh, seeking, uh, or experiencing, sorry, and what relief you're seeking?
Sure. So, um, we're looking to put a small addition on the front, just as like an entryway. I'm sure, well, most of you, maybe except yourself, have seen Geyser Crest area. Pretty much all raised ranches, split level. So it's really hard with kids to get in and out of that front door when you're on a landing and the door opens up on the whole landing. So we're really just trying to bump that out a little bit, that extra, I guess, five foot variance. Um, on top of that, I don't know if it makes any difference to you guys, but, um, for whatever it's worth, the front of our house to the road is give or take seventy-ish feet. So our driveway is actually about seventy feet long. So there must be some sort of buffer in between our property and the road. So we, we're just applying for it, um, based off of the measurements of, kind of that we've had. Um, so it really just bumps that out a little bit. So pretty small, just an entryway. And then on the side, we're looking to do, um, a, a small addition for ourselves. We, um, are expecting our second child. And we, uh, only have three beds and my wife works from home. So she uses one of the small beds as an office. Um, so we're, plus our ba, bathroom's currently pretty small. So we're just trying to build a small addition to have as another bedroom and another bathroom upstairs. Um, the septic tank is in the backyard and has leach field kind of going in either direction. And then there's kind of a failed treatment on the other side, um, of the house, which is also the side where our garage is underneath. So it makes it kind of difficult to build the addition over there and kind of have some sort of cohesive semblance, um, in that area. So we're looking for three feet on the side of relief to bring it down from a twenty-foot, um, setback to a seventeen feet. And on the front, we're looking for five feet to go from fifty to forty-five. Is there anything I missed?
It's a six, six by nine front?
Yeah, yeah.
It'll allow us to add a coat closet and make it so that when you open the door, you're not right at the stairs.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. Do you talk to your neighbors?
Yes. So I mentioned it to him when we first kind of submitted the variance.
The neighbors on the side that we'd be building.
Right. And, um, we do know that, so he had mentioned to me, um, they, you know, weren't super thrilled about it. Um, but they, he had mentioned to me that it was because he thought that his house value was going to decrease from it. Um, and we're trying to talk with them and kind of, um, I mean, we're, we're, we're friendly with them. We, you know, we, we, um, see them often. We don't have any issue. I think that they were just worried that it's going to create a decrease in value for when they, when their kids sell it, when they pass away. But, I mean, we like our privacy too. So we're planning to put like a, kind of a arborvitae barrier between the addition and like a little ways back, because we're planning to maybe put like a little, you know, sitting area on the backside of the house as well. And so we plan to put a fence and then also some, you know, probably fourteen, sixteen foot arborvitae's right along that side anyways.
Because, so I understand. So if, within the variance, if we said, one of the conditions would be that you, maybe that would be good to, um, I don't know, what do you think? We, we could bring that up as a condition. You might mention it to your neighbor.
Yep, yeah, absolutely.
And that way, you know, it's in paper saying you will do it.
Right. No problem with that. I mentioned it to him when I spoke to him initially. We haven't seen him in a, uh, maybe a month or so since. But, um, yeah, I have no prob, we have no problem with that because it's part of our plan. Because like I said, we don't want to have that, you know.
On our privacy.
Yeah, we don't really want to be able to really see them either. So not that we have an issue, but.
How long have you, how long have you been living there?
About three years.
Years.
Yeah, give or take.
Your neighbor, how long has he been there?
Long time.
Many, many years.
Yeah, yeah.
Fifty years, I believe.
When they were built.
Yes.
I, it was, it was, yeah. Because I don't know if they lived there or did they just know the name, the people that lived in our house?
No.
They live there?
Yeah.
So quite a while.
Across the street have been in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And anything, the value of the house would be going up, not going down. There's no houses going down in value. Right. Or in town Milton, I can tell you that right now.
Right.
As you drive down the road here, down Rowland Street, and those houses are going for six fifty. One house I know is almost up to a million dollars.
That's
So, I mean, they're not going down in value.
Right.
That's a fallacy.
Yeah.
You know, so.
What's, um, is there a fence between the two properties right now?
There is. It's, it's a little like kind of hobbled together. So there's, there is partly between the two, um, so between the two houses, not really. There's a, it's on the backside of the house. So there is not actually. So it's separating the backyards, but not the sides of the houses.
Okay.
Has your property been surveyed or?
So they, yeah, that's correct. So they had actually, um, the neighbors had their property surveyed not too many years ago. I think about five or so. And he showed me specifically the stakes. Um, so.
So as long as you stay that, within, away from that property line here, it should be.
How far you plan on putting the fence and shrubbery up to the front?
To the front of the property line? Or to the front of the house?
Addition's kind of going on the side, right?
Right. So right now, there's, we're planning to kind of like redo the fencing because it's so kind of worn out. So, um, from the front, we're, we're planning to really put shrubbery at least at the front of our addition all the way back, at least, uh, twi, you know, a, another twenty-five feet past. Maybe a little less than that, but at least something like that. So it should go at least a good ten feet or more past the backside of the, um, addition.
I don't believe we would go all the way to
That would be a good thing to talk to them about and then when you come back in, find out.
Okay.
Is it, is the fence yours or the fence his?
I think, I think the one side of the fence, it's a good question. It's the same fencing and then it switches. So like I said, there's like some, there's some chicken wire fence on the backside and then it butts up to our, uh, chain link fence. And then on the side, it's the same fencing that we have, but it's been piecemealed almost. So like, I think some is facing us and some is facing them. So it's, uh, I, I'm not sure. And it's the only piece of fencing that they have that's, um, I think wood on that side. It might be ours, it might be theirs.
If you check your deed, it might, it might tell in your deed.
Okay.
The fence, who the fence belongs to, if it belongs to you. It, it would be stated in your deed that that's yours. It might not be, it might be his. So.
Okay.
Something to talk to him about.
Okay, well, would that make a difference for us? Because we don't plan to really affect it at all. Okay.
Just the idea, just knowing who owns the fence.
Yeah, that's true. That is true.
You might have to do maintenance on it if it's yours, you know?
Right.
He might not want to do anything to it.
That's true.
You know, being a good neighbor, whatever, you know, making things a little better for both sides.
Right. Right.
When you say fencing, they sound like they're open, a chicken wire and chain link. That's not a privacy fence.
No, it's not. That, and that's
So he may require or ask you to put up a privacy.
Well, that's what we plan to do.
And split the cost.
Yeah.
Right. That's true. I mean, I don't even mind paying for ourselves if, you know, it's not that, it's not really that. It's just, like, like I said, realistically, we also want our privacy, you know?
Keep your kids out of his yard.
Right. Yeah, yeah. So, uh, yeah, that, that is part of our plan is to really, is to put the fencing all the way around and put some trees on that side to act as a visual and sound barrier.
So you may do both, part of the sea fence.
Right. That's correct. That, that, that's correct.
Great. Good buffer.
I would, I would definitely talk to your neighbors before, uh, the next one.
Okay.
Um, yep. Okay. Any, does the board have any other questions? Okay. Um, thank you. You could, uh, you could have a seat now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Supposed to say congratulations.
Um, okay. Um, no other questions. Uh, this is a type two, uh, action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act with a negative declaration of significance. Uh, may I have a motion to schedule the public hearing for this application for next month, November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four at seven P M? The twenty-first. Yeah. No, we, yeah.
I'm a week ahead.
You're all good.
Start those pines.
Somebody make a motion?
No, not yet.
I'll do it.
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
Certainly.
Mr. Smasenow.
Yes.
Mr. Akari.
Yes.
Mr. Quillen.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
But, yes.
Chairman Turquion.
Yes. Um, and then thank you for bringing that up. I was going to make a reminder that next month meeting is on the twenty-first. Not the twenty-eighth. You're, you're one step ahead of me. Um, so don't, uh, make sure your, your calendars are marked right. Um, and that is all for tonight. Uh, may I have a motion to adjourn, uh, today's meeting?
Yes, all concur.
All concur.
Concur. All righty.